Well, thank you all for being here today. I'm gonna dispel any rumors right away. And yes, your chancellor has had an accident. This is my new cane. I was running in the dark about two weeks ago and fractured my tibia long ways. And didn't know it. Well, I kinda knew it, but I didn't want to admit it for a couple of days. So I hobbled around here. And then the people in the office shamed me into going to the doctor. And I found out I had a fracture long ways in my tibia bone. So I have crutches in my car. That's a lot of good. And I have my cane. So today, I'm gonna sit there and be like a talk show host. Okay? So anyway, thank you for coming today. And I want to especially do a shout out for Alina and Nedra. They asked to bring some goods today for the pantry. I know a lot of you have. So thank you for doing that. Nedra has done a great job organizing our pantry, which has been a great benefit for a lot of our students. Well, I'm gonna be doing about the same thing as normal. I'm gonna put this up first. I'm gonna do a town hall that's mostly to update you what's been going on in the chancellor's office. And I didn't test my picture here before I came in, but by the time I got over here, I couldn't change it. But anyway, I like that picture because that's what campus looks like when we come to work in the morning, isn't it? Yeah. It's kinda dark, but soon it will be light. This was in December. It was a gorgeous day and I couldn't stop. I mean, I couldn't help but stop and take a picture of our campus. I love our campus and it looks beautiful all the time. But anyway, what I plan to do today, and by the way, I'll have to get used to our new technology. You might have noticed the room has been upgraded. Check out the walls. We have anti-reverberation panels and things. We have new speakers, all kinds of things. So thank you, Brianna, for upgrading this room. I kinda hear an echo. Anyway, I'm gonna give you a quick debrief. This is kinda the fun part. That's my favorite part. I hope I don't camp out in that part too long. I like to tell you about all the exciting stuff going on. Talk about a few organizational changes. Update you on the campaign. What's going on in Olympia. They're in the supplemental session right now, right at the halfway point. I believe yesterday was halfway point. Talk about our financial picture, our enrollment picture, what's been going on with our strategic plan. And then I came forward with some priorities that I would have for campus last October, right at the beginning of the new academic year. So I want to hold myself accountable and tell you where I am with those priorities. And then it opened up for questions at the end. Does that sound okay? Okay. Good thing, because that's what the slide deck is all about. All right. So last time, I'm pretty ate up with Husky athletics. Last time on the town hall, which was 10:10, I started talking about football right away. Do you guys remember that? Maybe? No? No? We were 6-0. We were ranked like number five in the country. I thought we were going to the football championship series again. Didn't turn out that way, but it was a wonderful, wonderful season. And I really enjoyed that. And I'll talk just a little bit about it later, but right now, I wanna talk about basketball. Wow. You know, we expected our women's team to be great last year, and they were. Now, they're in a rebuilding year. We didn't really expect much from our men's team this year. They were ranked 10th in the Pac-12 out of 12. So who would expect them right now to be 17-6? If you looked at the rankings this morning, they're actually number two below the top 25. So they're like in 27th place, which is phenomenal. And last week was a banner week. They kicked the Arizona's teams' rear ends, both of the teams, ASU and Arizona, on Thursday and Saturday. Both ranked teams, one 22nd, one, I think, 8th. So anyway, great team. Does anybody know this guy right here? I didn't know him until this season. His name is Dominic Green. And what happened, is this boring you guys? Good thing, because I'm gonna tell you anyway. I wasn't at the game and it was a blackout. I went to the game Thursday night, but Saturday's game was a blackout. So I couldn't watch it except get updates on the phone. But we were ahead most of the game, but Arizona's really tough. They have two seven footers. They kept coming back and they actually inched one point ahead. It looked like it was gonna swing the other way. We tied it back up. And somehow, we got the ball back with about nine seconds to go. They dribbled down into the lane and one of those seven footers slapped the ball out of the lane. But it went right into Dominic's hand. They call him Dom. He got caught it and put up a three pointer and swished through the basket and they won 78-75. So it was really cool. Anyway, so that's been going on. But back to more serious stuff, okay? This is one thing that happened actually before the town hall, but I didn't have a chance to tell you about it. It was, we have been going to the ESC, that's Engagement Scholarship Consortium, every year since I've been here. And last year was no different. We took a group. You can see the illustrious group here. You know all those people, Lisa and Linda and Tehran and Bonnie and myself, trying really hard. I can't do it, but I'm trying. W. We presented on the strategic plan. We were actually invited back this year. It's called Engagement Scholarship Conference. It's a national conference that talks about what community engaged work is going on at the institutions across the country. I've really been a supporter of this conference. I've been to it, I think, 16 or 17 of its 19 years that it's been in its existence. And we've been to it every year since I've been here. When I first got here, Lisa Hoffman and Jill and Joe Lawless and Roz and Mark Brown from the JBLM, we went out to Penn State to a session and talked about how engaged our campus was. We talked about the circles of engagement. It all comes back to the classroom and those kinds of things. And then in 2016, we went to Omaha with another group. I think we started with the winners of the Engagement Award and invited them. And we talked about that. And we told them about our new emerging strategic plan. So they invited us back last year. And that's why this group was here. This group was here to talk about the progress on the strategic plan. So if anybody's interested, Linda is organizing us. We're going to the University of Minnesota, which I learned is the home of Prince. You couldn't go through this weekend without knowing that. It's the home of Prince and many other things. Anyway, we're gonna go to Minnesota and present this year's ESC. And the topic is yet to be determined, but it'd be about engagement, what this campus is doing. So that's exciting. That was right before. Then we got to the town hall, and I'm talking about after the town hall. Well, the very week after, we had several important guests on campus. In fact, we had this very important guest right here. Our president came to campus just to have a conversation with their faculty. Every time I saw the president for the next month or so after that, she was bragging on our faculty what down-to-earth, engaged, enthusiastic faculty we have, in particular, the leadership. That's because Lauren, you see, was right there as well. So anyway, that was a very positive experience for President Calsei. I hope it was a positive experience for our faculty. And she's gonna come back. And I checked just before I came in and I have learned there is another person in this world because of Katie. She is, I don't know if you can see Katie back there, but she was pregnant at the time. So there's another person in the world because of her. So I guess she's on leave maybe. Nope, she's here. She's here. Okay, good. Okay. Then the next week, the first week in November. Anybody remember the first week in November? That's because it was a blur. There was way too much going on. We awarded Marion Harris the Distinguished Research Award the first day of the year. Then on the second, Bonnie organized a bunch of people. We were right in here. In fact, we went for an hour and a half talking about the update on the strategic plan. And then Professor McMillan, who's in the room, she won the Teaching Award and was given that on the seventh. And I have a picture of her on the big screen at the football team that I'm not gonna show because I don't think she appreciates it when I show that picture. But anyway, it was a really busy week. And then at the beginning of the next week, the next week started out just as busy. I think this may have been on the seventh or maybe the eighth. The Aspen Institute hosts this group, National Commission on Social Emotional Learning. It's the group that keeps track of what we do in the Tacoma whole child initiative, the work we do with our city and our school district. They were in the Pacific Northwest, hosted a regional conference to talk about progress. And you can see our own Josh Knutson there, Carrie from the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club. They did a great presentation. There were a lot of other UW-Tacoma faculty and Dean Endo was there as well. But I caught this picture of them giving Josh the microphone. That was a mistake on their part. But he did a great job. Is Josh here? Josh did a great job. He made me proud that day. As he does many days, I'm sorry. Also, we had the Board of Regents right in this room and the Jane Russell Collins, I can't say it, Jane Russell Commons that week. It was a great Board of Regents meeting. We featured the new, that one-year update on the strategic plan, because we had just done that the week before. It was a great presentation. Ty, who had been here for a month, managed to get himself in trouble in front of all the Regents. It was a lot of fun, wasn't it? A lot of fun. But we did a presentation. And the unique thing about that presentation, it was Ty, it was Dr. Purdy, it was Mentha, and it was Bonnie. The four of them, as vice chancellors or assistant chancellors, gave the presentation about the progress on the strategic plan to the Board of Regents. And the combined experience of those four people in those positions was less than a year. Isn't that scary to think about? Our campus is being run with people that, I'm just kidding you guys. It's a very exciting, very exciting time. We got a mix of the old and the new. So anyway, it was really exciting and we enjoyed that. And a little bit more, it just so happened that was Veterans Week. And our alumni group and our Student Veterans Association, I think that's Chris there and Roz, you know him. And I don't know, there's Tom. I don't know, who's this gentleman? Is he one of our alumni? Does Tom know? Is somebody know? He's a student? Okay. Probably student-veteran. Anyway, we had the flags out. Campus looked beautiful. It was a great day. We brought the Regents past this display. We also took the Regents, a few of them, up to the third floor of Tioga. I don't know if you've been up there yet or not. But a unique opportunity we had is the past chair of the Board of Regents, who's still a Regent, is Bill Eyre, who is the retired CEO of Alaska Airlines. So I took Bill up there and showed him the new named Veterans Resource Center. He was really proud of that. So our campus had a really good day that first week of February. So I'm gonna have to move quicker here. But then we got to the APLU. The APLU is Association of Public and Land Grant Universities. It's a conference that's been going on for over 100 years. Our president was on a keynote panel. It was a really cool keynote panel. They brought four experts. There are four presidents. And this fellow in the middle is the editor of Inside Higher Ed, kinda a distinguished media guy. And he interviewed them on what's been going on with this disruption that's happening on our campuses. And I thought Anamari kinda shined above everybody. Of course, I would think that. She's my boss. But I just really think the room really appreciated Anamari and her view on this, her view on inclusivity and what we should do as a public institution. And these are our important people. This is the guy, this president of Ohio State, Michael Drake. This woman here is Beverly Seifer. I used to serve on the provost staff with her. She was the associate provost for faculty. And I was the associate vice provost for engagement at Purdue at the same time. So we were close colleagues. This is the president of Boise State. And you know who that is. It was a great, and another icing on the cake, the next day, anybody know who this is? This was the keynote the next morning. Some of you older people. Nobody knows who this is? All the presidents' men.
Oh, Bob Woodward.
Yeah, Bob Woodward. Woodward. Yeah. He was one of the two. He started with the Post in 1971. He's still there. He's been there for 45 years or so, the Washington Post. He was one of the two guys that exposed the Watergate. And he's had the closest access to our presidents for the last decade, including the current one. So it was really, really interesting to hear him tell stuff on these presidents we had. He was talking about the Russian investigation. And he was talking about Mueller. What's that guy's name? Bob? Bob Mueller? He said, "Boy, I wouldn't want to have Bob Mueller investigating me if you tore the tag off your mattress. He'd be after you." He had the whole place dying. It was really fun. It was a great conference. I planned to go. I actually have to go because I'm on the board of the Urban Serving University Coalition. I'm on their national board now. We meet at this conference. Anyway, see, I told you I'd take a long time. I enjoy telling you about this stuff. The end of November was also really busy. Right here in this room, we hosted a regional CLT conference. That's cross-laminated timber. Forterra put it on on our campus. You probably saw the little wood structure out front of Snoqualmie Library. That was here because of this conference. This room was full of individuals interested in that. And the reason they asked to have it on our campus, when Governor Ensley was here last March, it's been almost a year ago now, whenever he comes to campus, he's very thoughtful. The chancellor always gets 15 minutes alone with him in my office. So he came in my office and the first time he came, I told you about it, we talked basketball. I was told to make sure I knew my basketball statistics, which is easy for me. So we talked basketball. But this year, he had a request right away. He asked if we had any new buildings on the horizon. I told him, yes, we have a new building that's in the legislature right now. And he said, "Would you be willing to consider making that out of cross-laminated timber?" And I said, "Well, of course we will." And that momentum has taken forward. To me, that's a great opportunity for us. We have the old warehouse district made of timbers and brick. And now we have to start our new building up the hill. Why not? What could be more appropriate than making it out of timber? Especially timber that is harvested for environmental reasons. It would be a great thing for us to take on and be a showpiece for that. So anyway, that's going on. Then, this is kind of a sidetrack too, but anybody know who that is? Well, you may remember the story. The way I found out about UW-Tacoma, whoops, that's not gonna work very good. The way I found out about UW-Tacoma is my lovely wife is a Tori Amos, what should I call her this polite?
Uber fan.
Fan, okay. Uber fan. That's safe. I was gonna, yeah. She's almost a groupie, but I won't say that. She loves Tori Amos. And we were on a road trip in Vancouver, British Columbia, to see Tori on Thursday night. And we were gonna see her in Seattle on Friday night and Portland on Saturday night. And while we were in Vancouver, I read about the position here as chancellor. So Kelly and I came to campus the day before the concert in Seattle. And we fell in love with the campus. So anyway, Tori came back through and she was in Portland on Wednesday night before Thanksgiving. So like a crazy person, I went to Portland with Kelly to see her concert. Came home and the next morning, this is why I broke my leg probably, the next morning ran in the 5K. Anybody running the 5K at Proctor? The turkey trot? You guys gotta pep up a little bit. What do you do with your free time? Well, I did that. And then I went home and made turkey and we had Thanksgiving dinner. But then Friday night, I let her go by herself. She went to see Tori in Seattle on Friday night with our son. And then on Saturday night, she talked me into going with her to Eugene. I had been to Eugene once, but not kinda on campus. But I got a chance to jog on campus and actually met the duck. How many of you met the duck on campus? Love it? Yeah. It's really cool. He's got a perpetual, he's making the O. He's not pushing on me. He's making the O. So that's a selfie with the duck. And then, I better keep moving here. The following Monday, this is kinda interesting because we were visited on campus. This fellow here is Ben Warner. He was our outstanding alumni in 2016. He has two degrees from the UW-Tacoma. Awesome young man. He started all commie skateboarding in town here. He's skated boarded across the entire U.S. and drove a moped across the entire Southeast Asia continent. He's a pretty amazing guy. But now he's a school teacher at the New Idea School. And they do a year-long project. Well, he, as well as myself and Danica Miller, several of us who knew Don Lucian have been charged with getting the name of Mount Rainier changed back to its original name. So Ben was charged by Don right before she passed away. And he's taking it very seriously. And his students are working on a project to try to get that done. And anyway, they were on campus to talk to us about that project. So anyway, they wanna change the name of the mountain. So we didn't slow down in December. I started off, I had an event at my home, invited students. Invited our newcomers. Everybody came. You see, we have a beautiful purple holiday tree with the UW hat on top. The one thing that people don't like about coming to my house at Christmas is this robotic Santa Claus in the corner. I married into this Santa Claus. This was Kelly's when I got married, but it is actually a robot. And if you get close to it, it starts dancing and singing Christmas songs to you. It's really freaky. But then it also has a microphone that you can take into the other room and talk, and its mouth moves. So I always kinda scare the crowd with the Santa Claus. What else happened? Oh, this is cool too. Sylvia, you know Sylvia in our office. I came in on the morning of the 21st. A lot of you might have already been off for holiday break. But she said, "On the solstice, the sun would rise right over Mount Rainier." And I'm like, "Yeah, it will. Sure it will." At 8:15, it did. I took that picture out of the window in the chancellor's office. So the solstice on December 21st, actually, if you're in Tacoma, the sun comes right over the top of the mountain. I didn't know that. How many of you knew that? Okay, I'm just way behind. All right. So let's get up to what's going on. Oh, there was football. Okay, there was football. So UW took a group. Those are the presidents. That's the president of Bothell. That's the student body president of Seattle. And that's our student body president of Arwa. They got to go along. It was a great trip. One of the cool things about it is this particular bowl game, the Fiesta Bowl, they organize, they have a tradition of getting the two schools together to do a service project. So about 50 people from the UW and 50 people from Penn State all got in the same building before the game. And this was the largest food pantry in the U.S. It's called St. Mary's. And we worked together packing food. And we packed, I think, 900 boxes of food in about a two-hour period. It was really fun. The cheerleaders came, the Husky Hendricks came. It was a lot of fun, but we actually worked a lot. So that was great. What else we got here? Oh, look at that. I think we need one of those for our campus. That's the biggest Husky I've ever seen. They had it down in Arizona. I've never seen that here. Ed, why don't we have one of those? We're gonna work on that. I know I'm not very tall, but that thing still is really big. That thing's probably 25 foot tall. And he's pretty. Look how pretty it is. Anyway. Also, the UW always looks cool on our football field, but it looks really cool on other people's football field, I noticed. This is in the Fiesta Bowl. And then, of course, we get to this year, the Martin Luther King Celebration. If you went to that this year, it was outstanding. The students and everybody behind it, the alumni did an awesome job. Ann and Mentha and her staff were phenomenal. This is Rosalind Brock. She shipped the timbers on the Y. It was so emotional and so inspiring, her speech. We also heard from students. We heard from community members. We heard from Derek Kilmer. We heard from our new mayor. I mean, one after another, each of the speakers really, really emotionally charged up everybody to carry on that legacy. The theme this year was Stand Up and Speak Out, which was a great theme for the time we're in right now. Our student body president talked. It was a good thing. And here's an interesting thing too. So I was walking back down to the car and I turned around. I heard a noise coming. There was a march on our campus right after the event. Were any of you in this march? It was pretty big. I couldn't tell. I didn't wait for it to, I was afraid of the traffic, of the traffic. So I got in my car. There was a march right down through campus about, you know, "Let's keep in hold of the dream." Very good. Okay, and then the last thing is, this was really touching to me, is I was in Seattle at, I think, a Board of Deans and Chancellors meeting. And I got an email from one of our students. And he asked if I could take down the flag and put up a Cougar flag on campus. And I was in Seattle. I knew I wouldn't be able to talk to Susan or to Mike Work or anybody about that for several hours. And I emailed them back right away and said, "Well, I don't know if we can do that because we actually raise and lower our flag in conjunction with the governor's office. We get emails from the governor's office on that." I said, "But you guys be creative." You know, I appreciate what you're doing. Be creative." And what they did is they took the Cougar flag and put it on our W, which was really nice. And they made this, you can't see it there, but they made this nice memorial. There was more candles there. I didn't get a very good picture. And it's a memorial to the student and suicide prevention on campuses. It was very well done. The young man was Tyler Holinsky from WSU. I'm sure you all heard about that. So that was, that was really a memorial thing that our students did. I was proud of them. Okay. Now on to the drier subjects at hand, but exciting subjects. Leadership development. We are down to just a couple searches. The EVCAA search closed about a week ago Friday. I've learned there are applications across the campuses. The committee is working to have a number of finalists. I don't know how many yet on campus. The last week, yeah, that week right there. We should have, we should get names before too long and then we'll have the interviews at that time. The Assistant Chancellor for Equity and Inclusion search, that's the world's longest search. That started last March. And thankful to have Carl and Sharon sharing that. They did a fantastic job. I met with the search committee about a Friday ago, maybe a Friday and a half ago. We had two finalists. I am this close to being able to announce a new vice chancellor, Assistant Chancellor for Equity and Inclusion. I'm really hopeful that in the next few days that we can finalize that. So that one's, we can almost set aside. Not quite yet, but almost set aside. And then we have one more kind of administrative search. One of the things I was waiting on for the Assistant Chancellor search was to replace our Indian Educator/Tribal Liaison. We lost that position about eight months or maybe more ago. And I wanted to wait till we had a new person on board so they could be involved in identifying that person. I've asked Bonnie and Michelle to chair that search. We're still putting the committee together. And new things on campus, there's really nothing new, but I'm just gonna remind you that we have this new educational outreach unit that essentially, the new name went live January 1st. We're not complete with all the development. We have hired a conferences manager who can't be here for another couple of weeks. So we'll launch that slowly, kind of a stepped-up launch. But it's all there and in process. And we're actually taking a benchmark visit in March. We're taking a team down to the Georgia Center at the University of Georgia. They have the most outstanding hotel, conference center, continuing education unit, I think, in the country at the University of Georgia. It's been there for about 60 years. And I've been to conferences there. I've been on a benchmark visit there when I worked at Purdue. So we're gonna look at the best one in the country as we build ours. I know we won't be that size, but we can maybe one-up them. So anyway, more to come on that. We did move institutional research. It's going really well, is what I hear from Bonnie and Colleen, everybody that was involved with that. So that was a good thing. Campus research centers, some of you may know, some of you may not know, that Tehran in the research office helped the campus put together a review system so we can review the centers. We have almost all of those done. The three biggest ones are done and we have one to go. And you'll know more about that as time goes on. One unfortunate situation is the new Center for Women's Leadership that I talked briefly about. It was still in its development stages last October. Actually, I think we may have gotten out over our skis a little bit. That's a new term I learned since I've been in Washington, getting out over your skis on that. Really, we worked with the donor to more align the donor's intentions with what we were developing as a center. And we're gonna have the scholarship and the mentorship program, but it's not necessarily gonna be with a center for women's leadership. It's gonna be more concentrated on the scholarships and the mentorships for the students in the program. We may still have a women's center in the future, but we're out working on that. So more to come on that. We'll learn more as more develops. Campaign update, this is really good news. $45 million. Anybody wanna guess that's not on the advancement team? Where do you think we are? What'd you say? 32? Anybody wanna guess differently? That's a pretty darn good guess. 3993. We're probably 31 by now. I'm sure you guys gave it the door, we're probably over 31. This is at least a day old. So we're past 2/3 of the way there. Really exciting. If you look at the breakdown, this is, there's nothing to worry about here, but it shows you where our successes are. Up here is what we've secured. So we've secured this much of student support with this much to go. So that would tell me by the size of these, we have a little bit of our work ahead of us with, in student support. But student support is what a lot of people do want to give to, so that's good. Capital support, you can see, we haven't done as much in the capital area, but you know, we haven't started a new building yet either, so there'll be opportunities for that. So this is available to you anytime, and these will be posted in the next day or so if you wanna check this out in more detail. Okay, what's going on in Olympia? Well, UW has one major request, one priority, and it's with respect to the compensation. I told you last year that they authorized us to give 2% raises this year, and they've authorized 2 plus 2 for next year, but they didn't completely fund that, which is a little difficult for us. But for the other four-year campuses, they funded it with a 50-50 split. They gave an allocation for half of it and then let tuition increases pay the other half. For some reason, nobody knows why, with our campus, just the, not just our campus, just the University of Washington, they only funded us 30% tuition and, no, the other way around. 70, no, I said it right. 30% allocation and 70% tuition, but only allowed the same tuition increase for us as everybody else, the 2% and the 2.2. So we didn't have enough in our tuition increase to cover it, so we had to take it out of our hide. For the University of Washington system, that's $10 million. For our campus, that's $1 million. It's extremely difficult for us to absorb $1 million that we weren't expecting. So the priority is to ask them to fix that. And I think it's going well. It turns out that they overfunded us about the same amount in another area of compensation that is negotiated with the unions, the collective bargaining in the state. So it'd be an easy fix for them. They just move the funds legislatively, they don't have to come up with new money. So we're hopeful that that is, that that happens. So that's the only University of Washington ask during the supplemental session. Now, we do have two other asks that we didn't put forward. Our community is working on a legal pathways project to enhance the pipeline of legal scholars in the South Sound, students interested in pursuing legal careers, maybe law school. There's a $200,000 request in from our community. We're all behind that and been helping them in Olympia build support for that. And the City of Federal Way has put forth their request to have that presence downtown Federal Way. Most of that money, I think about $500,000 of it, is to get the facility ready, and about 300 of it would be for us to have a staff member and for Highline to have a staff member present in that center once it gets open. So that's going forward, and I think there's quite a bit of support for that. We took our advisory boards down there a couple of weeks ago, or about a week ago. In fact, the day after I hurt my foot and I was walking all over Olympia with a broken leg and didn't know it. So anyway, Michael Wark has been doing the heavy lifting with that work. So it's, if you see Mike, he's right there. You can all see him, right there, I'm pointing at him. Thank him for all the work he's been doing there. You all heard, the capital budget got released, that's awesome. So we have our building committee working on the design with the consultant of the new academic building, which will have Milgard and the institute, some general classrooms, student spaces, and then we got our soil remediation money. Okay, the financial picture, I'm not gonna say a whole lot about this because we've organized some sessions you'll be hearing about right away, but I do wanna show a couple slides that Ty has shared with you earlier, just so this stays on everybody's mind. This shows what's going on really across the country. This is a UW slide, though, it's actually a UWT slide, but every campus has experienced something similar to this. And what it shows is the expenses that we have for teaching our students goes up over time, as you would expect. Salaries go up, the cost of living, the air conditioning, these new things on the walls, everything's more expensive, but we're getting less from our state. They actually cut the tuition. So we're headed for a place that we don't like to think about. And then if you look specifically at where that occurs, if you look at the revenue versus the cost for the combined state and tuition, and assuming the 2% rise, finally, that they let us have, and then put our cost, we got bad news coming up. Now, what we can do, and what we've been doing, is kinda kick the can down the road a little bit. By us holding tight on our spending, maybe doing a little reallocation, trimming around the edges, we can maybe push that forward a year or two, the crossover. And right now, it's like coming very soon. We can push it forward, but that's only a temporary fix. We really need to reset how we do our budget now. We have a wonderful new Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administration, I'll put him on the spot, who likes to get himself in trouble in front of the Board of Regents, ready to get himself in trouble in front of you as well, totally willing to do that. So I've asked him to help us reset. But we're from Washington, we need to talk about it, we need to give him ideas, we need to kinda pass those ideas around. But soon, sooner rather than later, we need to take some hard steps and move our thought process forward on how we're gonna budget us at UW Tacoma. It's that time. We have to do that. I didn't break another leg, that's just this. Okay. All right. On to more happy stuff. Well, actually, this isn't necessarily more happy stuff, this is reality stuff. This is a repeat of the slide I showed last year, I always wanna say it again. So what does that mean for us? It means charting our course is more important than ever. I said that before, and I'm sticking with that. It's true. Good thing we have our strategic plan so we can keep our attention on that kinda stuff and don't decide to do a whole bunch of other stuff that we can't afford right now. The growth agenda has to be carefully monitored, and this is controversial. And when I say controversial, since the costs are greater than what they, what we get for the students, some people would say, "Well, don't have more students." We believe, though, if we hold the line on additional growth in personnel and things like that, then we can teach a few more students here. So we would like to continue to grow into the near future to help us with the bottom line and help meet the needs of this community. So we gotta carefully monitor that because lots of people look at that, and they should. So that's important. New faculty and staff hires just have to be almost nil for a while. We can do a few. And when we have openings or turnover, we're not gonna be non-strategic and not fill those, but we'll look at everything carefully before we agree to rehire a position, because maybe that, those funds could be better deployed in a different position. So we'll look at all those more carefully now. While we're doing that, though, we gotta keep our eye on the ball, so to speak. We can't just get more part-time people or more temporary employees, 'cause that's not good for the employee and it's not good for the institution long-term. So we gotta watch what we do there. If you do have identified resources, and Jill and Ally and Lauren and Kaii from our executive council are all working, along with all of our faculty, on the academic plan. And the purpose of that is to first review what we're doing now and then look at what we need to be doing in the next several years and kinda line things up and be prioritized. If you can bring resources to the table, that can help catapult your program ideas forward. But unless something has resource, identified resources, it's gonna be hard to push forward. I'm gonna continue to be more proactive in advocating for us taking more of this into our own hands. What I mean by that's the Educational Outreach Unit is gonna be a resource generator for us, our auxiliary enterprises. We're gonna watch those carefully and have them help us generate resources to plow back into the campus. I just need to be on top of that, and the leadership team on campus is working with me in that regard. So I already put him on the spot, but I'll do it one more time in writing, in gold print. We're gonna lead looking at our budget from the ground up over the next year or two and reset what we're doing here. And then because of this, I already told you that Tioga, the old Tioga office building attached to the library is temporary on hold, which is very sad to me, 'cause the plants that are growing out of it just continue to get bigger. So it's good for those plants, I guess, but that building really needs to, in sometime in the near future, be remodeled as well, so it looks like the rest of our campus. So here, I'm just gonna show you the results from last fall. This is what I presented in October. We had a really good year. Undergraduate, graduate was right on track to what it normally is. We haven't experienced a growth one way or the other. We have very good student characteristics, one of the best classes, even though it's the largest class ever and the largest enrollment ever, it's the best quality when you're looking at academic quality. It's also the best quality when you look at diversity. It's the most diverse class ever. So that's all good news. We continue to be a shining star of providing access in the South Sound and actually across the globe for students who want an education that's, has a lot of social justice and social responsibilities built into it, no matter what the discipline is. So that's all good news. I think when we finished, after all the dust settles, and I don't know what day that is, but the number I always have memorized and see in print is 5185, which ended up being exactly a 4%, which this is kind of a miracle, but that's what we said we wanted to grow. As we had authority to grow, it was 4%. Boom, hit it on the head. Carl and Mentha, way to go. And whoever else worked on that. Probably Megan as well. You guys worked on that, getting them here, thank you. So here's one more piece of good news. Spring. This is the only institution I ever worked at where spring enrollment sometimes beats fall, but stays right up there. Most institutions see a 3% to 5%, 7% drop in the spring. Look at ours. We didn't even drop 1%. Students love this place because of all you. It's great. Great news. Progress on charting our course, lot going on. We have Bonnie working on this full-time with her SPPC. We're developing a dashboard. I've been promising this for a while, it will come, but we're gonna have it right when it comes. I actually have talked about her, maybe it could be 98% right and push it forward. And we have some more lightning talks, we promised those. We had two last quarter, we have two more coming up. The one in February is on culture, and the one in March is on students. So you'll wanna watch for those announcements, come to those. The CIFs, the Strategic Funds that were deployed last year, those are all in progress now. New projects have sprung up that's pushing our strategic plan forward. Really exciting about those, I've listed some of them here. We have a new person in the Office of Student Advocacy. We have this courageous engagement workshop set for April. I signed up yesterday. They're four days in April, four hours in the afternoon. I'm really excited to go to those. We have nine new COE fellows. We have six collaborative publicly engaged scholarship awarded this year, all kinds of things going on. We have an Equity Data Working Group. We want to measure things in an appropriate way for our campus. Just because the state or the federal government measures things a certain way, we want to do what's best for our students, what's best for our campus. So Bonnie has charged a group, it's Amanda and Ruth lead this group, to really get that right. So you'll be hearing more about that. I think they talked a little bit about it last summer, or last fall. And then here is a paid announcement for Mentha and Brianna. I'll collect later this afternoon. We are having two commencements again this year. The purple ceremony, I get to be in both, purple and the gold. You can all be in both if you want. Same times as last year, I believe these are the same times. There are, advertise this to the students you see, there are sessions, info sessions coming up in the next couple of weeks to tell anybody. Are these only for students, Brianna, or is these for anybody?
Anyone's welcome.
Okay, they're primarily for students, though? Okay. Anybody's welcome if you wanna learn about it. But here's what I wanted to say. For all staff, and I know many of you absolutely love doing this, but some of you may not love doing this, but really, we need you to think of it as it is your responsibility. You know, these are our students, if you're a staff member here, we need you to think of this as a change-of-duty station. There are some places on campus we are obligated to keep open. We have to keep a security guard or two on campus so they don't walk away with all the computers in our office. But if you're not an essential employee, your supervisor might be asking you, and it's a great thing to be a part of. Same thing for faculty. I know, you know, it's a pain. When you're done, you gotta do all that grading, get all the grading done, and then you gotta go to a couple commencements. Well, yes, you got to. Yeah, you got to. Yeah, we all do, so you got to, too. It's the, it's the highlight of some of these young people's, and they're not all young. I see them all. Some are older than me, some are younger than me, some are better-looking, a lot of them are. It is fun to be at commencement, so I'm encouraging you all, get on board. Okay, my priorities. Continue what's happened, I have only been twice so far this spring, but we have many more trips planned. I'll continue to be on top of that, Michael Wark helps doing that. I'm gonna continue to work with trying to bring up what we do for our tribes. That's been a priority for mine. I've had a little slow trouble getting that work done, but it's moving really well now. Myself and Brian Anderson and Josh, we're just at a tribal council meeting two weeks ago, asking for a couple favors of the tribe. You're gonna hear about the outcomes of that right away. We are gonna start the search, I told you, for the Tribal Liaison, Indian Educator right away. Several things are going on. I told you, we are getting close to hiring the ACEI. Last year, I committed to consolidate or and enhance the existing space in the Equity Inclusion Center. And if you missed it, last week, our student body, student body president made sure that I put a stake in the ground that we're putting that thing in Tioga and we're doing it as soon as possible. So we've gone on record, everybody and their brother were out there watching and saw it, but just in case they didn't, we put it into writing in a memo I sent to ASUWT, and we're working with the facilities people to start drawing up the configuration of that room, and we'll get started right away. We made that decision, and I'm bringing the incumbent, I'm gonna go ahead and start calling him the incumbent, 'cause I'm hoping that they're gonna say yes. I'm gonna bring him into the discussion of that. And I can say him, 'cause both candidates were male. Hopefully you can see that I'm supporting this by chiding our new Vice Chancellor every chance I get. I'm gonna continue to monitor and support the academic plan, but I've been told clearly to stay out of it for now, which I am. I mind very well. Complete the rollout for the new educational outreach, that benchmark visit is kinda the first major step of that. Josh can attest to for the fact that we are increasing, we're stepping it up. Not that we haven't been working on it all the way, but we're working really hard to kinda close out the last couple of years of the campaign. And I still am a champion for charting our course. Do any of you remember the graphic I put up of the ship that was floating with a UWT flag on it? I was really proud of that graphic. And Lauren Montgomery, our faculty, our Faculty Assembly Chair, bought me a version, a model version of that for Christmas, and even made a little UW flag. I got it on my, in my office at home, and just really proud of that. Anyway, the last thing is to get this hire done for the Executive Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs. And I told you, we're working on that, that's the next thing to come. So, there you go. What else could you possibly wanna know?
Hi.
Hi, Anne.
I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the Center for Educational Outreach? Tell us a little bit more about your vision for that.
Yes. So it's just educational outreach. I don't think it has the word center in it. So Educational Outreach is the unit, I showed the organizational structure. It's our conferences division, which is gonna be called Meetings and Conferences. The majority of it is right up here. It is Tyler, and we've hired a new conferences manager, and it's students that help put on all of the conferences and meetings on campus. That is going to turn to be a little more of an outward focusing unit. We do, already do a lot of outwardly focusing things with our community, but that unit is gonna join what used to be KeyBank's Professional Development Center, which is now just the Professional Development Center. And Lisa probably has some, I saw her come in with some purple bags. What are those? Are those the old ones or are those the new ones? The old ones, okay. So she has some old ones that aren't, that have the wrong name on them now. But after many years of supporting that, we're no longer using the KeyBank name, that has ran out. So that's gonna be in it. And then we're gonna have another unit in there, which is self-supporting programs. So any program on campus that runs its own self-supporting program, the backend registration and management, financial management of that will be done in this center. So all that will be housed in one unit at our campus, and it won't be spread throughout the campus in several different units. Is that what you wanted to know? There was a question over here.
My question actually had to do with the Federal Way Center. You know, we've heard rumors about it, and I've done research, actually, right next to that property, but what is that? What exactly are we gonna be doing there? What are those academic programs that are gonna be there?
Well, that's a good question, because I don't think that is defined. We just signed a MOU agreeing to work with Federal Way, and we've had a team of both academics and facilities and government relations people that's been working for over a year to determine what's most needed there. Federal Way commissioned a study, and if you read their study, they would like to have everything that we already do at UW Tacoma. Obviously, we are not gonna do that. But we, what we've agreed to do is open a presence there. So by what I see that to mean, in my mind, is we open up the doors of a spot downtown. It would be purple and blue like Highline. We would have both institutions' materials in there, logos, brochures and things like that. There'd be a conference room, classroom, maybe some technology. And then we would have a staff member, if we get the, if we get the allocation from the state, a staff member from each of the two institutions, and it would have to be like a jack-of-all-trades, somebody that was like a counselor, advisor, tour guide, somebody who knows a lot about student-facing activities. They could also, though, schedule things in the conference room from each of the two institutions, and maybe they could share time so we could keep it open later into the evening. That's how we're gonna start, and that's what we've agreed to so far. Then we would teach a class, if a class makes and can pay its own way, and then we'll just see what grows. So that's, that's what we're... You wanna say anything about that? Mike and Ally Maderas have been riding lead on that.
Thank you. It's a transfer-oriented partnership with Highline, and initially, most of the coursework, Highline can just assign a teacher to teach there as their teaching station. Highline can just assign a teacher to teach there as their teaching station, and so the faculty presence will largely be Highline at first, we'll do some work with distance learning, and we're working on that with a couple of programs that are interested in doing that, so that's how it'll start and gradually grow.
Thank you, Mike. Other questions? Comments, I get to talk all the time, somebody else want to say something about what's going on at UW Tacoma? Mark?
It's a question. Kind of returning to that tension that you mentioned around growth, and I'm wondering, so, if I'm correct, I think that we've received the message that we are not, not going to be growing any more in the immediate, in the immediate term, and so, how do we do that, right? Don't we have institutional mechanisms currently in place to bring in, bring in students for a growth projection? And so, I recognize that there's kind of tension around that topic, somehow, we need to be making decisions to do something, either grow or not grow, in the immediate term, and so...
Well, I will do my best, it's a very complicated issue, and what he's talking about is, yes, if the tuition and allocation is not paying the full cost of a student, if you do the math, the more students you have, the more it's going to cost you, and you're going to go further in the hole. Is that, do we have any math professors in here? We don't? Well, you could check math, believe me, I know that, I know that. So, that would be the thought process, and I think that was the concern going forward, why would you do that, especially since our last two programs that we've added, well, no, we've added three since I've been here, they were all, the decisions were made to add these programs before I got here. They were business analytics, which is paying for itself, but it was electrical engineering and biomedical sciences. Those two programs are for sure the types of programs that cost more than that tuition that is given to us by the state can pay, okay? So, there is no way we could add new programs like that and add more students to those and build more laboratories at the money we're getting now. But, that being said, our faculty-to-student ratio is lower than our peers, so we have a, we believe we have a little room to grow there, so we think, for our purposes, bringing a few more students in carefully, we would actually do ourselves financially better, and we would continue to do that, that's what our plan would be, as we figure out how we're going to reset the budget, and then grow however we see it's necessary. But in the short term, I think we have to be very careful, because real things have happened. For instance, when we got a little carried away and let more students into our biomedical sciences because of demand, I think it caused Ann quite a bit of stress because of the bandwidth for sessions of chemistry and biology and those kinds of things, it's very difficult to fill those sessions unless you add faculty, but we know we don't have a whole lot more income by doing that, so it's just, we have to be careful as we navigate through it. The worst thing that could happen is we just open the doors, you know, 500 students show up, and then next year, we have a big deficit, and us have to go to Seattle, because we had to hire 20 people to teach all these students. I think I would probably be sent home without the money, if I went to Seattle and asked to get us out of a deficit. So, it's just a balance right now, and I think we're working on it, I think the Board of Regents meeting that I've been making a little bit of fun of actually was very helpful, because one of the things we did is showed them what would happen if we stayed at 0% growth, and then showed them what would happen if we let it tweak up a little bit, it's actually a better financial picture. So, thanks for asking that, that, I don't know if everybody understands that delicate balance we have here. I think our mission, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, our mission is to serve those students in the South Sound who are prepared to come to the University of Washington, Tacoma. Nobody ever said anything about how many, my feeling was, all of them, all of them that come prepared. I can't see any reason in the world why we would say no, right now, when we got 46 acres, just doesn't make sense. What do you think?
I have a question, but I was going to be asking about Mentha, something about it. It has nothing to do with money, because like, that's not my world, to worse, but it's actually Wi-Fi, it was, something's been bothering me, so for us that either have an office at the UWI or live in Court 17, somehow, the university Wi-Fi literally stops at Pinkerton, and my apartment in Court 17 faces Pinkerton, and it doesn't come towards it. So, in Court 17, we have Comcast cable, and our router goes out like all the time, so we have to restart the router every other hour, and then in the University Y, we have the Y Wi-Fi, but like, our phone doesn't work, like, I can't use my cellphone inside my office, so like, I have to stand outside or like, use my office phone, so I was just thinking about that, and I know I can ask anybody else, but like, this doesn't bother me, but like, all the other staff that also live in the Y, and can we just get the Wi-Fi passed?
I don't think Mentha knows the answer to that, I think Patrick would be more prepared to...
Where you at?
Yes.
And maybe you do, Mentha, I don't want to...
I have been talking with your officers, some of them, and also the Chair of STFC, the reason behind both of those are, well, partly because of resources, so Court 17 is very expensive, we put our Wi-Fi there, because this building, I think we actually still under sort of like a mortgage, we have to pay back, we costed out, we costed at least a quarter of a million dollar to put, you know, Wi-Fi there, there also is ongoing costs as well, so we cannot afford it at the time when we opened up Court 17, and Comcast was the only choice at the time, we certainly look at it with Mike Russell and his team, and if there are other options for it, if it's too slow, we can also give pressure to Comcast to upgrade their facilities in Court 17. As far as the University Y building, it was a decision between the two partners, that because they had many other members, and it would be to our advantage not to open up our network, but for them to manage the Wi-Fi, so they chose a vendor, and the initial vendor, actually, they got rid of, and we gave them some information and suggestions that they should go with a different vendor, and they did follow, however, I understand that there's still a problem currently, so we are actually going to submit a proposal to STFC for a site survey or study, and see how much it will cost, because not only is resources, but also if you have two different Wi-Fi systems in the same place, there could be interference, so we are going to have to study that first, so one step at a time, so we'll be trying to do that as well.
Thank you, Patrick, and one additional thing is when we were deciding on whether or not to purchase Court 17, a little over a year ago, about a year and a half ago now, we did very detailed financial analysis of that, and for us to do something other than was already there, for instance, like Patrick said, for us to take the UW Wi-Fi and put into a building we didn't own at the time, but after we purchased it, it would have caused us to have to change the tuition, and that would have been an issue with students too, so we chose to try to keep things as fluent as possible, so it wouldn't cause any hardship for the students who had already made a decision to live in Court 17, so they could continue and not change the fees. As we move forward, though, we can have those discussions with the student body and campus leaders, and see what makes sense. We are in an environment right now, though, where the Board of Regents do not let us increase things over a certain plateau, and I believe it's, we can't increase fees over what the tuition increase that's authorized is, so we can only creep up by 2% if we could creep up. Thank you. Anything else? Well, you've been a great audience, I always love coming to Town Hall, and I wish you the best for the remainder of the winter quarter, and wish you luck for spring quarter as well. Thank you for being here.